Public hearing, planning and zoning commission meeting Tuesday, May thirty first, two thousand twenty-two. Roll call? Roll call. Vice Chair Bunker?
Here.
Commissioner, the member, Sam Clinton?
Here.
Mayor Glaze?
Here.
Row Town?
Here. Viola Loos?
Viola Loos, and Sam Clinton?
Already here.
Got it?
I'm here.
You're on your way.
And where's?
That's supposed to be him. He's absent.
Okay. Meeting starts at six thirty-three.
And I put the flag up there. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And then to the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible. And if you would remain standing for the invocation, please. Dear gracious heavenly Father, Lord God, we are so grateful to be here in the beautiful city of Martindale, Texas. Lord God, we're here to serve you, and we just ask for your guidance and for your hand upon us as with all of the decisions that we are about to make tonight. We just ask this in your son's, Jesus's, name. Amen.
Amen.
I need to. Yeah. May I just move this a little bit?
Um, it's time for the.
You're fine.
Public hearing.
And so, good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, I'm Lisa Shell Allen. And, um, as you used to see me sitting there, and now I'm standing here as your economic development coordinator and planning administrator. Since this is new to us, this topic is not new, but this process, um, as per our code, states that the planning administrator is to basically give the information about the specific use permit and scenic corridor certificate of appropriateness prior to public comments. So I just wanted to remind each of the council, I mean, commission members that we have done this a time or two. And in your packets, you do have all the information, um, that we have gone over in the past. I feel as if this will be quite short and, and sweet. However, I did want to introduce that this is specifically for four zero eight Lockhart Street. And like I stated prior to, the application is for a specific use permit, specifically for a drive-through or a restaurant. And because the location is in the public, I mean, is in the scenic corridor, a also an application for certificate of appropriateness. The words are slurred today for some reason. Anyway, so I have one. Are there any questions that the commission may have from me? Or to, like I said, we have gone over this before.
I, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
I just want to make sure all the letters were sent back out.
Yes, ma'am.
Did we get any that came back?
We did not, to my knowledge, to my knowledge.
So everything that we've gone over, we went over it previously, all of the details, all of the slides, everything. This is just in accordance that we're having this meeting due to the letters, um, being sent back.
And previously due to the newspaper not printing on time and law.
Okay.
Um, at this, at this point is where the, um, actual public hearing, um, and for guests and residents to speak. However, we did have one public comment that was sent in via email that I will read prior to anyone else. For, for the record, this came from Cindy Lawton. And she states, while this may already be in the proposed restaurant plan, or it is, perhaps a requirement of a city code, I would request that a privacy fence be installed at the expense of the proposed restaurant along the property line that separates the adjacent property of Lockhart Street in the name of Cynthia Rodriguez Lawton. There is currently a hedge grow that will not and has not been sufficient for the existing noise and occasional debris caused by existing food truck. The proposed drive-through should create additional noise and fumes, which would be somewhat abated by a fence. Respectfully submitted, Cindy or Cynthia Rodriguez Lawton. And so now, Chair McClabb, I turn it over to you.
Okay, it's time for the, uh, public hearing.
Right there. Sorry. Load that, yeah. What you want right there?
Is there any public comment for those who are joining us online today? So feel free to unmute yourselves or respond in the chat. If there's anybody in the audience who want to be recognized, um, please stand, state your name, and then make your way to the front. You can have your public comment at that point. If, if there are no public comments, that, that may conclude this public hearing.
So.
We close up the public hearing at six thirty-nine? And then we open the planning and zoning meeting, discussion, possible action items. Discussion, action for, like, Lockhart Street, approval of a specific use permit issued for the purpose of a drive-through for a new structure dining restaurant to build in mixed-use districts.
So at this, at this point amongst the, uh, commission members looking for a motion that would approve or deny the specific use permit, um, my, my recommendation along with the planning and zoning administrator is that it would be.
I make a motion to approve the specific use permit at four oh eight Lockhart Street for the purpose of a drive-through for a new structure, um, dine-in restaurant to be built in the mixed-use district.
Yeah, say it.
I had, well, I have something to discuss.
So the, yeah, you have a second, a second.
Any discussion?
Um, so we're mostly now just talking about the specific use permit for the drive-through, not so much the structure itself.
Correct.
I mean, it, it does concern me, uh, as I had mentioned about the driveway going in and out and how close it is to the intersection, that's probably one of the busiest intersections we have in town, but they have said in the design, which I have seen, that the driveway is closer to the property line, uh, that is farther away from the highway, so, um, as of now, I will approve it, but I do have concerns about the, uh, high use of that intersection and how the compatibility of the driveway coming in and out will, uh, work there, but we, we shall see.
And if I may too, if, if anyone has any specific questions I have asked, um, leave us to, to join us, um, as the building.
Official.
Official, thank you. If in fact there were any questions regarding setbacks or any of those types of specifics, he's the one to ask for those that may have questions regarding that portion.
I, I had a question for Lee, yes, so there's a twenty-five foot setback.
There is off of, um, yes.
So as I see it on the side of the property line there, um.
So if it's the area I believe you're speaking of, they were looking at, uh, actually turning that into a zero scape because there was a little bit of a concern, potential concern that if trees were planted there, that it may block the view. So they revisited that, fixed the council has brought, or the commission has brought up previously. And so now they're looking at zero scape in that area. Um, as far as the driveway is concerned and its location, um, that is within our ordinance as far as the distance from the driveway to that intersection does meet. Uh, that being said, we can always, Lisa and I will work together with them, you know, to, you know, see what other options might be available.
To ensure that meets.
Right, that it meets our current code.
Uh, Lee?
Yes.
Like question, have you, have you, have you been down there, kind of glanced and kind of staked it out? I guess I'm kind of a Mr. Clinton.
Yes, sir, I've been all over that property, the, the property owner's, uh, current, uh, business, we have, has not, uh, taken away any ordinances that they have to follow while they're going through this permit process. They have worked with myself and Lisa to resolve any concerns that we came up with. Um, there might be, we can visit with the engineer, um, and see if there's some additional safeguards. If the commission is concerned about pulling out, you know, interceptions.
Yeah, that's, that's, I'm, I'm with Mr. Clinton, I've been, I've brought that up multiple times, I mean, it, I like the plan, but like I say, that is a very tight spot, and I, like I say, I sort of make sure that it's, that coming in or out, that there's sufficient visibility that we don't have a collision or accident at that point, so we can work on that during the permit.
Yes. I, I had another question for, for Lee, so in the most recent meeting, they disclosed that they want to have a two-unit apartment on top of the restaurant. Uh, I have not seen really fully the designs of that, but I'm also concerned about the stairway going to the upstairs. How is that in relation to the building and the functionality of the flow of the drive-through? I, I have yet to see a stairway going upstairs.
And, and that is a, that's a, a, a good concern, but I think at this point, the elevations and the drawings that we've been provided to get to this point, I think that concern would be a good one going forward for the next, the next meeting on this.
My last point, could you, uh, Jared, get that, that photo that you got of the Google Earth? Could you kind of show us, uh, Lee, just approximately where you think that driveway would be entering the property for us to all see?
So that would be at that, that, uh, Bluebonnet telephone pole right there.
So that'd be the edge of the, that'd be the edge of the driveway, so the entrance.
No, I'm actually sorry, I'm sorry, Jared, if you could back up a little bit, right, right there. And so the, the first public comment was, uh, in reference to those hedges, uh, along that old fence right there. Um, and that's something that we'll take into account as far as when we look at setbacks. So when someone pulls up there, are they able to have a clear view of left and right before pulling out? So at a minimum, that'll be something Lisa and I will work on with the property owners to, to make sure that.
Just, just for my benefit, could you show me where the edge of that driveway would be?
If you see where that plus or minus is right there.
Jared's. Yeah, that's correct.
So it's actually further than what?
They follow that.
To the telephone pole?
It's on, since they were thirty.
That's correct.
Maybe that'd be their, that'd be your, your ingress. Ingress, yes. So that hedge row would have to be, that had to be addressed, but that would be, so the driveway would be on this side of the tele, this side of the telephone.
Yes.
So, okay, so it'd be right with the grass line comes in, it'd be right in there.
That's correct.
Okay. Okay, thank you. So we have a motion and a second, so.
Do individual.
Any more discernment, anybody else? Well, let's, let's call all in favor, let's do a call. I.
I made the motion.
You made the motion?
Aye.
And I say aye, so it, it passes. Three, two, three, three.
The four, four.
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 Four, well, and that's.
I'm glad y'all aren't keeping score like in a football game or something. Geez. Ooh.
So.
Man.
Certificate of appropriateness.
Appropriate in the same quarter based on chapter one five zero point zero five two.
Yeah, certificate of appropriateness, that's where we get to, the elevation. The sparkle character of our historical, cultural, and architectural character of the scenic corridor. What's presented on the screen, and as we discussed previously, these are the elevation drawings of something similar to what they intend to, um, build on the hitch.
Um, I, yeah, I was gonna con, comment on the scenic corridor, the purpose, and it says the materials or must, and buildings must be compatible with existing buildings and neighborhoods in order to sustain the cities.
We need to make a vote.
So I'm gonna make a motion to approve the certificate of appropriateness, uh, in the scenic corridor uh, for, um, four oh eight Lockhart Street.
Do, do we have a second? Second, okay, Tom, any discussion?
Uh, yeah, I was, I was just mentioning about the materials must be compatible with existing buildings now. If we look at that structure, there's nothing like it in the scenic corridor, and there's nothing like it really in the city. If, if you looked at that structure, it could be in a parking lot at Springtown or on South Lamar and in Austin. Um, on the other side of the highway near Martindale Gas and the other adjacent old farm buildings that are there, maybe the Bagley Buildings, they all have gable-style roofs. The, uh, Dollar General has a gable-style roof. The only building that that could be compatible with is the Sack and Pack right there, but it depends if we want to go into the future now and say that the buildings, the future buildings that we're gonna build in the scenic corridor are gonna look like regular commercial buildings, then yes, that's appropriate. Because it's a functional-looking building, it's new, it's metal, it's glass, it's gleaming, it's, it's, it's beautiful, but if you look at all the buildings on the right side there, they're farm-style buildings, gable roofs, metal corrugated shed roofs, even at the restaurant on the left, so I need to address this to the council and say, is this the future of how we want buildings to look in Martindale? Because if you look between the Taco Feliz and Dollar General, there are three homes there which perhaps are in a dilapidated state and will eventually be torn down, and commercial buildings will be built there. So I want to directly ask each commissioner, if, each person on the commission, if they feel that this building is compatible to the historic uniqueness and structure that exists on Highway eighty.
And Commission Member Clinton, if you do not mind, I would like to just read the purpose for, as a reminder, the purpose of the scenic corridor and for all to be, um, uh, on the same page, the purpose of the scenic corridor is to preserve and enhance the visual quality of the two principal gateways leading into the city while facilitating traffic flow and providing the safety of motorists, pedestrians, cyclists, and landowners. In addition, the scenic corridor requires the building size, exterior details, and materials to be compatible with existing buildings and neighborhoods in order to sustain the city's unique qualities that have proven to be increasingly attractive to residents, businesses, and tourists. And as your, uh, planning administrator, um, it is possible that you may choose to, um, approve this. You can do one of three things. You can approve it straightaway, you can approve with a condition. You can make a condition that somewhere there is corrugated tin and/or a pitched roof of some sort, even in a facade-type way. Or of course denial, on which we're, great hopes that that's not what you do. But, um, I just wanted to make it clear what the purpose is and that you do have the option to approve with a condition. We do have a property owner here, and if you, so if you have questions and wanted him to come and maybe answer any questions like, would you be willing to add some corrugated tin or a, a gable roof or a pitch? Um, I'm sure he would be willing to answer those questions. Um, would you like to come forward, Mr. Yamas?
I think the idea of the picture was based on buildings. So you see how they have the windows on top and they have the little, so end of the black, you know, cable, so basically this, but they put the brick on there.
Can we, can we go back to the, can we go back to the photograph?
Whoever did the pictures.
This is gonna have to be one hit, invention was for brick, and that didn't come through here.
Oh, I mean.
So that's brick.
So is this, is this a, is this a concept?
Yeah.
It's gonna be, it's gonna be exactly like this, or? Just a concept?
It's still flexible, okay.
Uh, yeah, we'd be nice, be nice if you had a, uh, more of a, of your concept, what you're, what you're looking for, like, uh, for example, the, the fire station, you know, we had, they had, they had an example of that, uh, I mean.
May I get some clarification?
Yes, ma'am.
What you're saying? And then, uh, unless you, you want to finish?
No, ma'am, I didn't want to.
No.
Oh, I'm just, I'm just asking, that was just, that's gonna be set, Tom, or is it, is it gonna be close to that resembling that structure, or?
No, I mean, it's, it's, it's. But like I said, I, I got the idea.
And when you're pointing, just for those who are on Zoom, um, he's pointing to the downtown.
So you're red, a red brick type with an awning or something like that?
See that awning on this?
Okay.
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 Well, just back to the stairway going up, upstairs, where is the stairway on that, on that building? Okay, sorry.
I was being respectful and letting him finish, but I wanted to.
Yeah, go.
Go ahead and address what I wanted to say. So basically, like, um, I think as long as he's following our codes, our ordinances, on our guidelines that we have set forth, and he's within those parameters, we can say, yes, we would like this, but then we are imposing what we would like on his building standards, much like a, uh, say like a school dress code. It depends on the interpretation of the principal or the administrator who's ever there, whether they think that it's okay, but I want to say that as long as he's following our guidelines, what we have on the books and our ordinances, he's following what that is. When I spoke to him before, like he has stated, there is gonna be brick, there is gonna be the awning, uh, the metal awnings. And, um, I think that his concept that he has for the building will very much will like coincide and mesh with what we have going on at the entrance of this city, and it's gonna definitely be much improved than what is there right now.
Yes, ma'am.
Quick question for you, sir, so you're, you're gonna look, go for that kind of a look, the brick, the red brick with the.
I like the look.
You like the look, you're, you're thinking that, well, that line, that would be good.
Okay. Okay.
Any, any other further questions?
Any, any, no, any?
Any more comments? Yeah, I, you mentioned, I think you're making reference to.
Mike.
Yeah, well, or even just the one line in the purpose of the scenic, scenic corridor there, um, but, okay, dude, you want to hi, highlight that, the exterior standards?
Yeah, so this, this is with the, the, um, after the purpose, which was read previously, um, development standards regarding minimum setbacks, landscaping, parking, um, entry rights away, which, which aren't, not applicable to this session tonight, then architectural features, which are, which currently being discussed. Um, the style design, arrangement, size, components, um, outer surfaces, similar color, texture, style, windows, doors, lights, roofs, and other features, um, appropriate to such buildings or structures as to reflect the mixture of existing, mixture of existing gable roof style, which is what you're referencing with the Highway eighty feet barn, McCaff, uh, Red Barn Cafe, uh, frame vernacular or colonial revival structures, that, um, scenic corridor, so, um, it does allow for a mix of, or building off of, say, the main street look instead of the uh, the gable roof style.
I see.
It, it, I think there's, there's a leeway for, for the commission members to, to consider that as well.
Okay.
Okay, we, we have a motion, we've got a second, now it's, um, you want to start?
Well, I'm still, I'm still foggy about the stairway going upstairs to apartments upstairs. I mean, I don't know why I keep saying this, but I, I don't see a stairway, so I, I just.
Has that, that been designed yet? Has that been engineered yet?
There's stairwinds pictured, but the architect is the one that does all the design, so he, I know you know how to do it.
That hadn't been finalized yet.
Exterior stairway.
And there's one in that.
Oh, it's right there.
I see, okay, okay, if there, if that's where it is, that's good.
Okay, you.
We had a public, um.
Yeah, no, I'm just trying to get in there. That's okay, I know, I do understand that this is not an open public right here, but I do, um, have a question to ask the, um, the board. Sorry, I apologize. Um, this is, sorry. Can you? My, I'm sorry, my name is Dorothy McGovern. Um, on, um, the code is one to five five point zero nine six. Um, and this is, um, the permit thing specifically says that only commercial can have a driveway. And right now, we are designated this as multi-use. So my question is, how do we, um, circumvent this, or how are we not circumventing this and, um, addressing it?
So that, that's the, the council, or the commissions of action just prior to this, the previous agenda item.
Okay.
They approved a special use permit for the drive.
Thank you very much, I do apologize, I misunderstood that.
More, uh, comments?
It looks, it looks like a slut piece.
I promise the food won't be the same.
Okay, we have, we have a, uh, a motion and a second. It's time, all in favor, Mr.?
I'll say yes.
I made the motion.
You made the motion. I second it, or you second it, so I vote yes, so it passes.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Uh, adjourn meeting, adjourn planning and zoning meeting. Yeah, uh, any motion?
Yeah.
You're just gonna end it?
Oh, do you have some motion?
You always do a motion for her.
I make a motion to adjourn, uh, the planning and zoning meeting at seven oh.
Seven o'clock. Seven.
Seven, seven o'clock. A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion accepted. So we go, then we go.
Now, we're going to open the special city council meeting, and the first thing we'll do is the roll call again. So Mayor Row Town, Villa Loos, here. Uh, Councilmember Bunker.
Here.
Councilmember Styler is absent. Councilmember McClabb.
Here.
Councilmember Clinton.
Here.
And I'm Mayor Glaze. Is there any public comments? Adrian?
I did not receive any today.
Oh, I think they're on, on that.
Yes, you've got.
Is that acceptable?
Um, yes, I was just gonna hand it.
Thank you.
Dorothy McGovern, yes, hi, and I just want to make a comment that was passed on to me from the, um, the eyes of the San Marcos River Group, I don't know if y'all are familiar with them, they are, um, uh, organization, nonprofit, that cleans the river, um, the water, they dive in, snorkel, pull thing up. And they just.
Is that Zach?
Um, Joshua? I don't know, I don't know all people, it was just from, uh, from them, that this weekend, um, it was, uh, it was seen, if that's the right word, and that the Martindale Police drove by Skull, um, Skull Bridge twice and did not address public that had cans, they were drinking cans, um, right there on the ridge. Um, and they were just concerned that, since we had talked about, that then, that was one of the things that, um, not so much enforcing, but notifying pe, people that this is, this is one of our, um,
ordinances.
Ordnances, so, um, I'm just passing that information on, thank you. Ordinances, so, um, I'm just passing that information on, thank you.
Thank you. Um, Bill Glaze? Did you have a public comment? Oh, you were just signing in?
I'm gonna wait for the rest of this, the next presentation, so I can understand it better.
Okay. Okay. So our presentation at this time is Thomas Turk from Freeland and Turk. He's going to offer us some alternatives to the original design. Okay, it's all yours.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, my name is Tom Turk, one of the principals at Freeland Turk Engineering Group, the engineer for this project. So, um, this project was, um, approved, this, this layout was approved as part of the application, though it's turned in a couple of years ago. The city has been awarded a grant or underway. It is federally funded, uh, which means that it has to go through, through an environmental process. And part of that process is to look at various alternatives to achieve the project's goals. So when we submitted the application, uh, we provided a concept. And that concept was done in a very short period of time. And now we're looking at that same con- concept and, uh, trying to understand different ways that the same thing can be accomplished, like routes, different sizes of things, so. Uh, the reason we've come to the city council this evening is to simply show you all of the alternatives that we can think of to consider. In about five or six weeks, we're gonna come back to the council. We're gonna show, uh, all the, all the alternatives that we did consider, the advantages, disadvantages, and the cost. Uh, and then there will be a public hearing and, uh, the city council will decide what the preferred alternative is, which enables us to move forward with the design and complete the design and finish up the project. So we're simply here to show you the alternatives and get some guidance from the council, if, if they choose to give it to us. Uh, and that's kind of another way of saying, if there's an alternative on here that you just know is not gonna work, let's take it off the table right now, so, so we don't spend unnecessary time and money considering an alternative that's not gonna work for anyone. Contrary, if there's an alternative that you would like us to consider, now's the time to speak up, we can add that to our list. Go through the next month and consider that alternative. But I just wanted to make sure everybody understands kind of the big picture of where we're going, where we are today, and where we're gonna be in the next couple of months, or is there any questions on that before I go into some of the specific? Everybody understand kind of where we're going and why we're doing. Great, okay. If you have a question, as I'm explaining things, just stop me, be happy to answer it. So, the, uh, I'm gonna do my presentation from back here.
Okay.
I spot you on the back of the head, I'm sorry.
Uh, you gotta stand over there. You don't wanna, you don't wanna slap me in the back of the head.
So.
I'll move.
Big picture wise, what the, what the concept in the application says is that there's a considerable amount of stormwater that comes from the north, passes under highway eighty through some multiple box holes. Those roads swell through the cornfield. Uh, and it goes through a pound a meter drive, and obviously there's an awful lot of flooding, clean strip. Clean strip, thank you. There's an awful lot of flooding on Northwest River Road, and that's the problem that we're trying to fix, okay? So, the concept in the application was to intercept that water net swell using a ditch and then, uh, flowing the water in, in that ditch into a box culvert. So right here, and then constructing that box culvert in Northwest River Road down to cemetery, where it outfalls today in a ravine. There was also lots of complaints about drainage in this area. So we, uh, our concept shows the extension of the storm sewer system down here where we have various inlets that pick up that water and take it basically to the, the same ravine. Uh, and then, uh, there was complaints about stormwater all along Northwest River Road as it goes into Quell Run. Uh, to include, uh, this culvert here is, it's in pretty poor condition. So part of the project was to reconstruct this road, include drainage and make that culvert right there. The extent of the road improvements would go all the way to Lockhart Street. That's, that's the concept of the project that was in the application. There are other ways to accomplish the same thing. And so we're considering, uh, a couple of alternates. One alternate is to, uh, run this box culvert instead of going this way with it, we would go straight down to the river, kind of like that. Obviously, a shorter distance, so it, it has an advantage there, however, there is still a lot of water that has to be picked up in Northwest River Road, so we still need a storm sewer system, albeit smaller, in here to go to the cemetery. So that's one alternative that we are recommending that we look at.
Is that alternate number one on this map, on the map that we have here?
Number three.
Yes, number three, okay.
Another alternative is to, uh, outfall the culvert at this location, kind of a, a mid-location alternative. Uh, and the advantage there is, again, you are reducing the overall length of those box holes, which are very expensive. Uh, but you still need some storm sewer system out here to pick up that water and.
Real, and get it real quick, but you have to buy more culverts, correct? If you're going, if you're putting those, that one there or the one, this one, or another one, you're still having additional culverts you gotta put in. So I mean, are you saving, are you saving any?
Well, that's what we're gonna find out. That's, that's what we're trying to.
And the one you're doing right now is. A number two.
I guess alternative number one is the original, not, in the application.
When you're installing the culvert, say the one at the curves, they are going past, no, the one farther down? Oh, oh, I see, no, I, oh, well, where it's coming down? Do you dig, uh, underneath or do you dig on top of the ground and then install a culvert, or do you tunnel under the ground?
Under, under this option, we would, we would excavate, install the culverts, cover them up. So most of that culvert system would be underground, you wouldn't even see it. The exception would be out here where it ties into the river, where we lose our elevation. Uh, you would, you would see the outfall, and there would be a short channel to get the water to San Marcos River.
I, I have a question, so.
Yes.
By now that you said that, but wouldn't you, you just said you would go through the cemetery?
Not through the cemetery. Uh, we would basically outfall into the ravine that goes through the cemetery. So our construction would, uh, this is still very, very much in design, but we may need to go twenty-five feet down that ravine. The property outfall water, slow it down, so it doesn't cause any erosion, and let it flow out like it does today. So we, we do have to go into the cemeteries for that option, but the impact is extremely low. We're not affecting any graves that we know about, it's a, it's a, it's a very short distance that we're working in the cemetery. And we know that it is a very, uh, a very historic and very sensitive cemetery. We're doing everything that we can to stay out of it, uh, but at this point, we don't think we're gonna be able to do that, but it's still a goal.
I had a question about the road there at, not at Lockhart Street, but where the driveway comes down from the parking lot of the schoolhouse and going to the ravine, that's an extremely low spot there. How much higher is the road gonna have to be built there in order to accommodate the driveway and the drainage for the ravine?
It's probably gonna be about three feet higher than it is today. More or less.
And you had talked about having to redo the driveway for the schoolhouse.
And we'll, we'll rebuild that driveway and it will work.
I guess this kind of follows my previous question, I, I don't really see the cost factor, it looks like the original would be a less, just me looking at the big picture, a less of a cost, because you don't have to put, you're gonna have to acquire these properties, I mean, you're gonna have to go through these people's, you know, precious riverfront property, and that's gonna cost you. Whereas you already have that drain, that ditch already, you're gonna have to get the landowners to agree to that, and then you're gonna have to have additional culverts, I don't, I don't see any, I mean, as far as a monetary, uh, reason, I don't see. Is there, is there any savings? I guess you really don't know.
There, there could be, and that's why we're doing the alternatives analysis. So in each one of those, for each alternative, we'll do a design, we'll do a layout, uh, we'll do a cost estimate, and we'll bring that to you along with all the advantages and disadvantages.
Okay, I guess, I guess my second question, is the, have these, uh, potential landowners, have they been contacted?
They've been contacted, uh, to acquire rights of entry for surveying purposes, guys.
But I mean, have you, have you done, I mean, I, I guess the first step would be the feasibility, and then you would, then you would contact the particular landowners.
Yeah, so if, um, uh, when the preferred alternative is selected and we proceed with design, and during design we determine that we will need to acquire right away from boats, then they'll start going through the right of way process, and that, that's a very, a very deliberate procedural, uh, functions. Uh, they'll be notified, negotiations, offers, all kinds of things happen. Uh, again, we're not in a position at all to say to anybody, we need property stuff.
Okay, so.
So that's down the road.
Okay, so are the, are these other al- are they, are they more efficient, is it a better drainage system, or?
At this point, we've just recognized that these three alternatives are reasonable to consider. Uh, in another month or six weeks, we'll be able to come back to you and, and give you, uh, a, a more definitive alignment, costs, advantages and disadvantages.
I'm seeing five here.
We have a question back here.
Yes, by, by your description of alternative one, two, three, this alternative one is thirteen hundred meter feet of box storage and zero liner? That's the original proposal, is that correct? So this thirteen hundred layer fee, then a box, number two, says it's eight hundred linear feet box cover plus seven layer feet of RCP pipe system, right? Is that cheaper than box culvert? We don't know yet. It's part of the alternative analysis, it looks like fifteen hundred, fifteen hundred, the original is thirteen hundred. We don't know, we don't know yet, that's part of our job over the next six weeks is to tell you that. So really, the way you're looking at the council is, are there any red flags with any of these that should be taken off the table? So less alternative, yeah, center. We need to call something, let's, let's do it, yeah.
Okay, just do a real quick recap, no, you're just doing three.
Okay.
You were not, we haven't looked at four or five. Oh, okay, I'm sorry, go ahead. No need to recap yet.
So I'm, I'm giving you the three alternatives on basically the, the main, uh, stormwater drainage system. There's a couple of all the other alternatives that we wanna consider with this project. One is, uh, the geometry of this curve here. As you all know, it's, it's very sharp, okay? Uh, and from a geometric standpoint, from a nerdy engineer standpoint, it's substandard, it, it needs to be fixed one way or another. There's two ways to fix it. Uh, one is to make it an intersection with stop signs. The other way is to, uh, put in a nice, long, sweeping curve here, much like what you see here. So those are two alternatives that, that we're gonna be looking at. Um, if you wanna put in this nice, nice, long curve, we're gonna need some, a right of way from the landlord. So there's a drawback.
Um, that's right there at the shoe tree.
That's correct.
Shoe tree would go away.
Right here.
Yeah, by the shoe tree.
So.
Which is move it.
Yeah.
So another.
A new one.
Another challenge that we have is, um, inflation. Uh, when we did the cost estimate two and a half years ago, the, the cost was five point two million dollars for the construction. That same work costs eight point two million dollars to the.
Ouch.
We lost three million dollars worth of project in the last two and a half years. And, uh, you know, just for your information, uh, you know, I've been in this field for forty years, and I've never, I've never seen, uh, an inflationary environment like we have today. Um, our cost estimates that we do are good for twenty-four hours. That's it.
Twenty-four hours.
Twenty-four hours, it's just, uh, amazing, we, we've seen, you know, thirty, forty percent jump over the last year. And that's what's, that's exactly what's happened, if, if the inflation has gone up, structure costs have gone up, oil has gone up, everything in this project, either directly or indirectly linked to the price of water, whether it be the actual asphalt or, you know, gasoline or diesel fuel that it takes to deliver product. So everything depends on oil, so oil goes up. Project costs, oil goes down, project costs. So we've gotta figure out a way to trim about three million dollars from this project. And we've got kind of a list here of ways that it can be done. And again, we'd like some guidance from the council, either on the priorities of this list, or if there's something on this list that you just absolutely do not wanna consider, we need to know that, if you wanna add to this. We'd like to hear from you. So I'm, I'm gonna, uh, I'm gonna go through these items in no particular order, okay? So one way to reduce costs is to reduce the length of reconstructing Northwest River Road. And so, uh, for example, you know, if we wanted to save a considerable amount of money, we might just stop the reconstruction right there. That would mean we're not gonna reconstruct the culvert at Quell Run. There's a cost savings there. Uh, the road that we caused, we caused, they did in the concept was a twenty-four foot wide road, nice comfortable road. Doesn't have to be twenty-four foot, it can be as narrow as twenty. That's about a ten, fifteen percent saves, so that's another way, uh, that we can cut costs. Uh, the drainage system, uh, we designed to a particular design frequency. Uh, our current target is about a five-year storm. Five-year storm is a storm in which there's a twenty percent chance of that storm occurring in a given year. It's about forty, maybe forty-five percent of the hundred year, I think you always, have always, uh, heard of the hundred year storm, so we can always look back on that. If we lower the design frequency, our, uh, storm sewer systems get smaller, they get more inexpensive, the inlets become smaller, the barrels become smaller, the number of barrels changes and goes, you know, down, so that's a way to cut costs.
How much cost saves that they take of the culvert? You thoughts on that?
Uh, that's part of the alternatives. I, I don't know at this point.
Yeah.
We'll, we'll know in about six weeks. Um, we had in our original project to reconstruct this inter- intersection, including, uh, that culvert there. Uh, we think we could save money and just leave it as it is, seems to be working fine. And then, uh, with regards to saving money in terms of utilities, our plan was to, uh, recon- uh, or install a new waterline all the way down to Quell Run. But if we don't reconstruct the street here, then there's no need to sell the new water, so we can save money there. That's pretty much the list that we're working with in terms of value engineering or trying to trim three ma- three million dollars off of this project. So those are the alternatives, those are the ideas that we have to cut costs. I would love to hear your answer at this point.
I guess I'll ask a stupid question, I mean, we got this grant, do they give us a, can they get, give us a little bit more based on inflation, or that's, that's, that's on that grant?
I understand, that's it.
Okay.
That's the money you have to work with.
That's fair enough.
If, if you exceed that amount, it comes out of your pocket.
Okay. I was, oh, I'd ask.
But that's a good question for your grant administrator, but I, I understand that's it, sorry.
Is there, be able to detail the exact increase in cost? Because it's easy to throw out like forty percent or five to eight, but I think, you know, if, if McClabb right in that to fix some of money, then. if McCloud write in that to fix some of money, then there can be wild variations in what your estimate is of the increased cost. But if, you know, what's the reality of it? Because that could be a lot of difference between a thirty percent and twenty percent is a lot of money.
Yeah, when we come back next month, in, in uh July, early July. Uh, we'll present the alternatives and the value engineering in a way that you can see where, you know, if we do this or we don't do this. This is the impact of cost, and you'll be able to compare it back to the concept that was in the application.
So you'll have it break, broken down between material, material cost and labor cost? What each one of them have gone up since that time period? Because that's what it should be based on, right? Like, whatever, whatever, two thousand twenty, is that what it was in Florida, twenty twenty?
We.
You should know what that is at that point, and then up to now, and that should be your differences.
We'll, we'll have, we'll have cost estimates that have line items for work, the quantity and their unit price. Does it?
And how does it change over time?
We can do how, how's change.
I mean, that's true, I think that's critical in order to make that decision.
How wide is the river road now? You said varies.
It's where you are.
Yeah, where are the edges?
Uh, somewhere between eighteen to twenty, on, on average, I mean, it, it, it varies.
So for counsel, just want to draw your attention, the alternative with the um by the shoe tree. The, the smoothing out that curve or having almost that ninety-degree angle that exists now. Um, putting stop signs on that road, expecting people to stop. I think it's, it's not gonna work out too. Is, obviously, we don't know the cost impacts one way or another, but I'd almost say if you were, we're gonna do this project. I recommend the council, you consider just proceeding under the assumption we're going with that smoothed out curve. And, and going through the acquisition of that right away.
I, I already think the curve is, uh, is still too angled. I'm surprised there hadn't been any accidents there. I think it needs to be straightened out a little bit more, that's my opinion, uh, that, the.
Well, you, what, you wait, you wait, once that's, if we don't change that curve or do something, that road is smooth. They're gonna be flying down through there, because all, what we got now is reverse speed bumps for those bottom. So they're gonna be flying, they're gonna be, those people just love to get that inside corner and punch it, you know?
Exactly, that's what I'm thinking, having that ninety-degree is untenable in, in the future. Untenable.
Miss Nick, over.
Yes, has anybody uh thought of the uh brought the idea of doing speed hubs, like?
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
So where are you looking at putting them?
I brought that up about ten years ago.
I'm doing some research.
Okay, because I, I mean, the cost would be minimal, and would slow people down, you wouldn't have to curve in, I'm just.
What speed do you want people going?
I, I don't live there.
Should be twenty.
I'm sorry, I can't, I cannot speak on that.
What speed does that, does that current turn support?
No more than thirty.
Twenty right now, like.
That's a design, so what, what speed roughly would the current rate, turn radius of the current turn support? Or, does it not support anything?
It's on to.
Yeah.
Yeah. Actually, I think the stop sign would be safer.
Don't have the necessary vision. When you approach here and you go flat. That would slow people down enough to make a safe turn. Right now, I don't see people speeding around.
Oh, they speed, I live around that corner, they do speed, trust me, oh yeah, especially at two o'clock in the morning.
You've, you've brought up a, hold on, you've brought up a very interesting subject. Engineers, we're, we're trying to get people in and out with as much safe speed as we can, what I'm hearing. If you don't want speed, you want something slow. Is that what I'm hearing from everybody here?
There's, there's houses on either side, and kids and stuff like that, that's a lot better than it makes people slow down. You make it curve, people are just gonna keep all an ass in there.
Okay, so what, what is an acceptable driving speed for this road that you would like to have as the design? And if this is not it.
Right now, it's twenty miles an hour through those two S's, right? There's a, right out here, there's a twenty-five mile an hour going that way, but it's a thirty mile an hour going the other way. I mean, just none of it makes sense.
Yeah, it's like that straightaway maybe could be fast. So one way versus the curves. Our, our current thinking is, when this is all said and done, you'll be able to pass safely down this street at thirty miles an hour. If that's not what you want, if you want things to be slower, now's the time to crouch. Because we can design things into this road to slow people down to where you don't have to go.
I think so not, so what I would say is like, if you're gonna spend a ton of money, and this, this is maybe like a hundred thousand, two hundred thousand dollar, but you know, I would rather have that go to being able to keep the whole thing. You're talking about maybe shrinking it, but if there's li- these little things like that that cost more money than maybe aren't as necessary as even the whole drainage plan, maybe we should look at that.
That, that'll be uh part of uh approving the preferred alternative, those combination of things, if you want, in the project that you can afford.
So the council will be able to pick and choose later on.
Absolutely.
I want that, like, a la Cartman.
This is called a minute. You'll have the ability to pick and choose.
Yeah. Let, let me, let me add one more point. A lot of people, believe it or not, actually come here from, out of our city limits, you know, walk or ride a bicycle. We have so many pedestrians, you know, riding, riding bicycles, walking, jogging and all. I mean, it, all the way from Lockhart Street or downtown, all the way to Skulls Bridge. I mean, you see people all the time, you got cyclists coming in from Austin, they, this is these back roads. I mean, personally, I think it needs to be twenty miles an hour, because it's, it's more that, it's, it's really more of a pedestrian and bicycling, actually. I mean, so I think, m- my personal opinion, I think I'd like to have it lower than thirty.
Yeah, me too.
Because, because people, I walk, you know, and people ride their bicycles and kids, and you got kids, young kids walking in.
Let me, uh, let me run a concept, like, let me know what you guys think. So like, this is a, a long stretch of road, okay, that's, say, twenty-four feet wide. There's something called a chicane. It's basically a narrowing of the road that forces people to kind of slow down. Right? And it kind of looks like this. Whereas your approach, you notice that the roadway narrows, and you have to slow down. And once you get past that, you can, you can uh speed back up. But this might work well, you know, going into the curves here and going into the curves there. Uh, that, that's something that we could consider, that's something that actually slows down the traffic in a very safe way. Uh, you know, everybody uh recognizes speed bumps really well. There's a statistic out there, it's like sixty or seventy percent of speed bumps that are installed are removed within two years. Because they're noisy.
Yeah.
Uh, and people end up, they don't like them, people don't like driving over, and, and the residents don't like the notes.
We're gonna round about.
Oh, uh, we don't have any intersections.
No, I know, on that corner.
Oh, here?
Yeah.
So a roundabout is typically something you do for odd number of streets that come into an intersection.
I know, but it would also slow you then.
So, uh, you know, what he's suggesting is do something like that. Um, that's an interesting idea, uh, we would have to get right away from multiple landowners to make that happen. Uh, but it's, it's something that we've been considering.
I'm not sure that it's necessary.
Might serve well when that big endeavor gets developed, how around about that, because I'm sure that they probably take that straight, something like that.
Lisa, Lisa wants to say something.
Thank you. You mentioned a moment ago that there are other options to slow traffic above and beyond or set aside from speed bumps. After you said that, then you gave this example, is that the only way? Or are there other ways to naturally slow traffic without really cutting this job?
Well, another way is just a narrow road.
I see.
Uh, and that, and that would have to be something that has curves on both sides. Say it's only, uh, it's only eighteen, maybe twenty foot wide with curves. Before, that's gonna tend to slow uh people down. Uh, given that we have a straightway here and a straightway there, I don't think a narrow curved road is gonna, is gonna do the job. You're gonna have to find some other way to, to slow them down.
I, I just wanted to add that, I think like, just hearing the comments that a lot of people do like to walk, they walk on the road. I think like if it is a narrower, that's gonna jeopardize pedestrians, that's gonna jeopardize bike riders. And it's not going to be, um, you know, to their benefit. Whenever I hear like narrowing of the roadways, the cars do go fast now. And it makes me think, you know, like a possible collision, because they are going faster. But I just think that narrowing it isn't, I think if we're trying to cut costs, I know that what you said, substandard. But if there's any way that we could just slightly bring it up to par, you know, cut corners, well, like the money. And digging out a whole new, doing this whole road, but somehow make, making that to where it is standard or a little bit better than to what it is, instead of doing a whole bunch of money into a big curve. But still making it safe for pedestrians and bikes.
Would it be even remotely feasible if the road or whatever width to literally have it striped? For a pedestrian and bike, like a.
Yes, of course, of course, yes, so. Typically, a, a, a bike lane is about five feet wide. So you could, you could literally uh construct a twenty-five foot wide street and then stripe five feet of it for bikes.
I think like, if it was substandard for this long, and if the design doesn't impede, like or cause to more flooding whenever it does rain. If that's not what's attributing to the water piling up there, then I think if we could somehow fix that a little bit to make it standard, save some money and not do a whole new roadway. Do a lane where it is safe for pedestrians and bikes. Um, maybe not the speed pumps, but the little things on the roads that, just the plastic, you know, I don't know what it is. Yeah, the rumble strips, yeah, or something like that.
They, I mean, they, they, they do alert people and, and put them on notice to slow down. But if your house is right next to them, or you're within, you know, a block or two.
Could you install them next to Mike McCloud?
I wanna speed them, right in front of my house.
Something, something else to consider.
I'm kidding, Mike.
I had a burning for the desire for bike and pedestrian. But you could, you could narrow the road and take that money you're saving.
Yes.
A special, uh, special use for shared use.
I like that better.
They're usually about eight or ten foot wide, and they accommodate bike and pedestrians very well. And it's separate and apart from the street.
Yes, so we would, you think that, if we're saving money doing that, making that a little bit safer? Do you think that's doable?
If, if, if you take some money out of the street.
Yeah.
Narrow it down and put that money into a shared use path, uh, you can, you can do that. That's what you wanna do.
We had a question online, uh, can we apply for any other grants? So, there, the last week or so, um, the, if the nationwide infrastructure bill about a year ago, part of transportation put out that everyone started accepting bids and call. Which covers roads and bridges and those sort of things. Um, however, it is a nationwide competition, so every, every city, town, county in, in the country is probably going for it. Now, there is billions of dollars, but our ability to compete, it's maybe put our hat in the ring, but it's not as guaranteed, far as other grants specifically for roads. I'm not aware of any of that. Uh, not, that would take complete the rest, the full.
It's a good question for your grant administrator. Um, there, there's lots of grants out there, there's lots of money, but the competition is and it's hard to get. Uh, and, and it might be difficult to add that to this project, but uh, I think there's something for Jessica here, yes.
Yes.
Is the entire length of the road that you're talking about, is it all curved? Or just where's the curved sections?
What we have in our cost estimate is called a ribbon curve. So it's flush with the pavement, but on both sides of the road. It's not from raised curve. The concrete curve, it's concrete, it's concrete ribbon curve, so it's a flush.
Is it flush or does it?
It's just flush.
There is a difference between like being in a curve, like saying, and then car going around fast, you gotta.
If you want a kid or something, you wanna introduce some safety and make pedestrians feel a little bit better, you want a, a raised curve. And then you want that sidewalk or that path, you know, somewhat off of that curve line as, as much as you can. Yes, sir.
I'm a lifetime cyclist who's ridden a quarter million miles on a bicycle, it's, I know a lot about that stuff. And I think it's always a mistake when you try to not coexist, coexist. Uh, it makes sense to coexist, and, and however we do that, it's better. Try to isolate bicycles in one place and walkers.
I am a really bad mountain bike racer. I agree with you. Uh, however, when we did this, the direction from the council was not to consider pedestrian facility. Uh, I'm with you, I, that's the direction you guys wanna go, be happy.
Yeah, but that's gonna add costs, right?
Well, like I said, there's a, you can trade, you can take some of your street money and apply it to pedestrians, so.
Listen, thank you, you give us, you can give us that option, right?
Absolutely, absolutely. Are you interested in, are you more interested in a, a painted part of the street to ride in a bike? Are you interested more in a, in a sidewalk or a shared use path? Give me some feel for that.
Nah, do painted, just because that, the sidewalk sounds expensive.
Uh, sidewalks are cheaper than tape.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Just give us both options, I mean.
Can I just say that, I was out on Stoll Ridge Road, uh, the bridge there, the parking lot, so some time ago. I don't think it matters when, a lady came and like, I don't know if she was a four-bet or whatever it was. She was, that wasn't before that, because she was all over the road going about seventy miles an hour, just kinda bouncing back and forth all over the road. Oh my god. So, there are people out there that drive that fast.
Yes.
And that's a really bumpy road, and she, she could have lost control at any time.
And I, I clock them on that road, I walk my dog, and I clock people on that road all the time. Uh, the highest I've seen is eighty-five.
So, back on the, you want to consider bike lanes in, in the street? And then a, a side walk that would just be for pedestrians? And a shared use path? Which is pedestrian and bike? We'll give you those options, it's easy enough. And then, uh, so.
We have the room to, to build all of that, do one of the, a road, a functioning road and a shared use, a shared use.
I don't know, as part of the alternatives, we may need to get additional riders. That'll be part of the disadvantage of, yes.
The road right now is, to me, is narrow. Okay, then the curb, no, it's extra stuff inside for pedestrians. Okay, you're gonna have to acquire land from the land of some, some other landowners.
Yes, I think so.
Okay, right now, the going price for land here, I have no idea of this, it'll be very expensive, and let's go eat a whole bunch of stuff. It's just thinking, do y'all want a nice boat to keep from flooding, or do you want all these little amendments? Do y'all want a nice boat to keep from flooding or do you want all these little amendments right there?
They're trans.
Yes, sir. To me, it makes most sense to make the why, the, the road wide enough to accommodate the traffic that's there. Control the speed on that road within reason and let us coexist on that road, whether we're walking or whatever we're doing. I mean, I think that's a reasonable, you can spend, you spend dollars and money, um, kind of drawing all of these lines and making bike paths. I just don't think it makes sense. It's my thing.
I think it would be interesting though, um, only because he said he would break out the cost separately and then compare it.
Right.
It's worthwhile to go through the exercise and maybe they, you can do like a diagram of what it would look like so people could see.
That's true.
Or there's what a, you know, and then at that point you can make a decision, but right now it doesn't hurt to explore the options, the costs.
Every, every one of the alternatives that we present, uh, there'll be a plan view. Uh, and there'll be some pictures and some details that got into you and feel what it might look like when it's built. Uh, and then cost information and advantages of this.
And, and I would just like to add that not, not only like when people come to visit Martindale. They walk from town and they walk all the way down Northwest River Road, usually to Skull Bridge, and then they come back. You know, around, if we're not doing the, um, the, doing the water line there on the side also. Maybe you could just extend, you know, a, does like a path like Mr. Glaze was saying to like coexist. Uh, you know, just for safety measures because not only with that, you're making the road safer, but you are also making it, um, user friendly and safe.
Joy, did you have a question?
I did. I was wondering if agricultural easements were less expensive than residential, um, easements? And if so, could you make that short vertical section a divided, um, uh, road for safety concerns? Uh huh. Have, have the straightaway, the upper straightaway continue slightly into the field and then come down.
If it's a, if it requires agricultural, then.
Develop.
Yeah, um, land value is land value. Obviously that's tied to its, its current use and potential use in the future. Um, so, so generally speaking, this land should be more inexpensive to acquire than a developed piece. So you have a good point. So yes, and we'll, we'll consider that when we.
And that's, that's not a whole lot of land. This is, that is, it wouldn't be that much. I mean, I mean, very small amount.
But still, um, uh, still costly to acquire. It's not just the cost of the land, but there's cost of surveys.
Oh, yeah. Independent.
Uh, the shoe tree in the middle and then just do another road. Yeah.
So.
This is shoe tree right in the middle.
For the lady who, uh, suggested this, the more we move this curve out here, the sharper this curve becomes. So there's always. But we'll look at that, yeah.
On the, on the surveys that are being completed, um, are the property owners setbacks being taken into account? Like, let's say, for example, uh, property owner A had a twenty-five foot setback in front of their lot. Is that being taken into account?
So first of all, we're, we're, we're not surveying anybody's property for a wide away acquisition purposes, only survey. Second of all, uh, setback lines are typically dictated by building. And that setback line would be from your wide away line in or from your side yard, you know, rear. Uh, and, and when we acquire prop, property from people, that property changes and the setback line changes right along with it. So if we acquire five feet of property, then your setback line is now five feet further back. Now, the property owner would still be able to continue to have that non-conforming use if their house was, say, not in compliance. Now, if there were a major flood event and more, and then fifty percent or more of that, so that home would have to be reconstructed. That's when it probably, those setbacks could pose an issue. Cause then at that point, if you're doing more than fifty percent reconstruction, you would have to comply with the zone. You would not be able to be grandfathered in. Um, and, and if, if the acquisition causes damage to the property, that's compensable. Theoretically, the landowner will be compensated.
I believe that.
Okay. So let me, let me go back to the speed limit here. This is really important for us. This is something that we hadn't heard before. This is kind of new. I get the feeling that this is kind of the number that everybody likes.
Yes.
About what it is today, more or less, and you wanna keep it that way.
Is that reasonable though? I mean, that, that road almost functions as like an internal architectural road. Other than Highway eighty, that's the only traffic thoroughfare from one end down to the next. I don't, I don't know.
And, and slow down. And part of the selling of this project to the federal government was, it was a collector's.
It was a white street.
Collector, the collector. So in other words, people are passing over that road to get from, from one kind of end of town to the other. They're passing through, so it's, it's collecting a lot of other traffic and moving along. Yeah. A residential street typically only serves the people on that street. We don't have that here. We have a, this is a collector's street and a twenty mile an hour speed limit for a collector's street is very low. Collectors are typically thirty-five, forty.
And I just wanted to say for some historical perspective, in years past, the majority of the houses on that thoroughfare. After the curves, both of the curves, so the straightaway area were all on the riverside. It's only been the last twenty-five years that more and more houses have been built over a few.
Yeah.
But.
Probably ten or fifteen.
But, but there have been quite a few added in the last, for sure, fifteen years. That was just.
I would just like to make a suggestion, so we don't spend a lot of time on discussing like the speed limit. But I think what needs to take place is like the same thing that took place over here. Where there is a survey done by our officer where he's at park somewhere. He's taking speed limits, um, and he's also doing that and then providing us with that data. Uh, I would not want to jeopardize our grant, um, the way that it is of it being a collector's, uh, road, uh, the way that it is. Um, so I think that the study is gonna be very important if he could just get like, you know. A couple of days or a day's worth of speed limits on the weekend.
Is there a speed limit that's too low for the grant that we would be not considered a coexist?
The grant doesn't dictate speed limits to you. Uh, speed limits or design speed is a function of the classification of the street. Uh, in this case, we're, we're actually trying to do, do something lower, five or ten miles an hour, lower than the design speed. Uh, so it's, it's, it's a bit of a different approach. Um, we could certainly go in that direction. At the end of the day, if someone has heard. Uh, it's gonna be, it's gonna be tough to keep people at twenty miles an hour. You, you're gonna have to do.
Uh, 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 I'm on straightaway. That didn't seem reasonable to me. The curve and before you get into damn.
That's where enforcement comes in. If you wanna keep it at twenty, if you really want speeds at twenty. We can, we can do everything that we can do. We can do things like this to physically slow people down. You can put speed bumps and all that. At the end of the day, twenty miles an hour is unnaturally a low speed to be driving.
What about twenty?
People are, people are gonna wanna drive faster.
Twenty-five seems like a better.
Yeah, twenty-five.
I think thirty on the straightaway and then twenty on the curve.
Right now, the road is so bad.
Yeah.
That I don't.
Yeah, nobody, yeah, but as soon as it gets.
It's gonna be nice when it's.
Yeah.
They're gonna go, they're already be speeding then.
Yeah, I think it's unreasonable. Twenty miles an hour.
Like I said before, and, and it's been said multiple times, a lot of people, I mean, there's kids, there's, that, that's a walking street. I mean, that, that whole area, there's kids, toddlers, I mean. So, I mean, we've already got our grant, correct? I mean, if, would that, would that jeopardize the, if we decided to go a little where, I mean, that's, it's our money, right?
Is what doing a speed study part of our budget or is that just gonna feed into our ability to construct them? Cause I know when we did, the rep quiz was on nineteen seventy-nine, that was a tech stock maintained roads, tech stock did that speed study. As I understood that, took what, how that takes place is for them to set the speed limits. Is they, they go out there, they monitor speeds and then see what most drivers do. And based on that, say, this is a reasonable speed and they set the limit based on that. It's not exactly, you go out there, set a speed limit and then go monitor if they follow it, if you're, you're kind of.
So you're right. What they do is they, they go out and they monitor the speeds. And if people drive at a comfortable speed and they'll figure out pretty much what that is. And then they'll set the speed limit at eighty-five percent of that. That's how they do it. You'll probably be disappointed in the results.
Yeah. Drive ten or fifteen over that, so it all evens out.
But, but it's, again, I mean, you guys are drivers too. You, you like to drive at a comfortable speed, right?
Well, like I said, this is a unique road. This is not nineteen seventy-nine. This is a unique, that section of road. And once you, and really, once you get past Skulls, it's pretty much, you know, thirty-five, it'd be thirty-five.
So, so does, so, but would a speed study be something that would be available to us under the grant? Would that be something the city engage our police officers to do a quasi-study?
I don't think it's part of it.
Uh, yeah, I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to use, I wouldn't want to use grant funds for that anyway. Because just, it's just a part of our safety as a whole, whether they're gonna do the road or they're not gonna do the road. Like, um, I think there is some issues going on there that do need to be addressed. And I think the only proper way to do it would be in a study, which would thus benefit what they're doing for the grant.
Speed, speed control is dictated by Texas Transportation Code anyway. So placement of, of speed control devices of any kind, you, you've gotta actually meet the standards set for, under the transportation code.
And we, we would design a project for a designed speed. You can, uh, have speed limits that are different from that. If they meet the criteria that you just.
Yeah.
Okay.
Man, I learned something tonight. Thank you for, for having me. I, I didn't know this. That was really good to know. I think, uh, the pedestrian, the bike facilities is something new. Uh, and I'm glad we're gonna look at that because I like those too.
Uh, well, you know, it's a shame. There's very few places around here you can do that safely. It's a shame. We're not like, you know, Texas is way, you know, I mean, we don't, we, we're not a pedestrian friendly state. I mean, certain places are, but.
And, and it serves to.
Yeah.
At least start a connection between, uh, is this Skull?
Skull, yes, Skull's right.
The road here and then downtown.
Yeah, yeah.
It's a popular move.
That's a popular way a lot of people walk there. And as the town grows, it's gonna be more tourism and, you know, people like to walk, walk their dogs or whatever, you know.
Is there anything else I can?
That's the whole area that people use as, well, right there. It actually is private property.
Yeah.
It's used as. I think so, yeah.
The right where it floods in the field there, isn't that sort of a blind curve anyway? I mean, you don't really see around the curve when you're coming through it until you're practically in the middle of, of the curve there. So the site is very bad there at that curve.
It, it does have a long enough radius where given, given the, the site that you do have and the speed that you're traveling at.
Yeah, and I'd much rather see the drainage still be in place from the shoe tree going to the schoolhouse. Because that, that floods a lot through there and then when you of course get down to the cemetery and schoolhouse, that, that is a really bad spot there. So I, I am more for drainage than extending the, the road.
Thank you very much.
Hey, thank you. Very much.
Okay, we're gonna move on to reports, um, boards and commissions, the Mar, sorry. The Martindale San Marcos River Advisory Committee.
Over here, um, first of all, I wanna thank, um, both the citizens and the city of Martindale. The opportunity this, this past three and a half years, um, to contribute what I can to the river. Um, there comes a time where I want volunteerism and, uh, community involvement takes precedence over the actual work and early. Uh, the more people invested in their city, the better, stronger, more cohesive the community. In that spirit, I'm resigning from my position on the River Advisory Committee in order to afford others the same opportunities. As we can get hands, the committee has been an amazing group of people to work with and anyone of them may make a fine.
You've been amazing too.
Thank you very much for your service.
River, thank you.
Um, so for the next item, we have the Parks Advisory Board. And, yes, and I guess you have someone who wishes to donate two thousand dollars?
Yep, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go here. Can you pass the ring? Sure. There you go. Okay, so these, I think this is a go ahead and run. I guess I can resign.
As much as you might.
That would be, that would be, really won't be. No, I just, uh, student Sean was in charge of this and she got real busy. Okay, so here's the, uh, on the soccer goals. Uh, if you look at these, and, uh, this picture here, this is a parking lot up by nineteen seventy-nine. And here's the kid play area and there's the basketball court. And I used to, I tried to walk my dog down the road every day for a while. I see this old patch of grass over here. It looks like it could be a really nice soccer field. And then, uh, I heard that Mari, now I wanna call him Doman Note, Doman Note, but it's Dominguez?
Domingo.
Domingo, thanks, thank you. Somebody said Domingo, that's a. Domingo, he's building, he's fixing up the building on, at four one six Main Street. And, uh, I heard that he thought that this, this is property here also looked like the perfect place for a soccer field. And I, I, I had lunch with him, maybe it was, uh, maybe four or six weeks ago. And, um, he said, I'll give you, I'll give the city two thousand dollars to buy two soccer goals. For that patch of land to turn into a little, it's just recreational soccer field. It's not anything beyond that. And I said, really? And then I really, I guess he's an entree venuer in central community of, but he said, yeah. So I went online and found a dozen soccer places, it's sort of soccer bowls. And, um, we sat down and talked about it. Then, uh, basically this is, this is what we came up with. Now, there's more than one company that makes this, uh, this is supposed to be a sixteen by seven point eight. Or a soccer bowl, that's a bunch of numbers. It's been approved by the A S T M, American Society for Testing and Materials. But, um, it's, it's not full size, which is twenty-eight by twenty-four feet. It's two thirds of that. And so any field that we had would be, it, it, it's most two thirds of a regular field, which is way too big for this. But if you look at the, uh, now, right now, this is, it's raining here, so there's not a lot of brown. But here's this basketball court and then there's the tree. And then right now, there's about, at least a twenty yard stretch of pretty, I'm not gonna say dead, but brown grass. And then you get some, I guess because of the undercurrent of the water table or whatever, we, we have, have a fair amount of green right here. And then it turns kind of, um, you know, arid again. And so I don't know exactly how far that is. I have a tape that I bought, I can mark. But if you put one soccer goal, you know, maybe, uh, twenty, twenty-five yards, that would be north. That would be north of this last tree and the same on this tree. It would be a perfect little area, and if people kick the ball past the goal, it wouldn't necessarily go into the the thickeners down here or or into the river, but uh. We just saw that would be just tremendous. And then I started trying to schedule meetings with the with the um. What do we call, Martindale Parks Advisory Board? And um, okay, I scheduled one on Tuesday, five seventeen forty-two. Um, City Council was also maybe that night, it was a bad night, Carol said, uh, Divini said she couldn't make it. And I got, I came here and I got real sick and I'm sorry, I left, I was supposed to be accepting the position at that time, but I really, really glad I left because it did, it did not go well that night. Okay, seriously. I tried to stay, I said, I can make it, I can make it, and they're like, you're not gonna make it. Okay, so then, two weeks later, yesterday, Monday, five thirty twenty-two, we tried to schedule another meeting, not realizing it was Memorial Day. Uh, which most people didn't want to be here. And uh, Carol was still not available. I uh, I called everybody, okay, I called Susan Shown and said, yes, I like the idea. I called Anita Gonzalez and she said, yes, I like the idea. I said, I like the idea, so that's three out of five. Uh, Angela Jimenez, I called her, left a message and said, call back. I hadn't heard, doesn't she live right across the street, I could have tried to go to her house. But uh, I did send her an email, I sent everybody an email today saying what was going on. And I sent, I didn't even have Carol Divini's number, so I also sent her the email. But we did have three out of five say, yes, this is a good idea. So what we like to do is get Mari is in Europe on vacation, okay, they say. This is a, I've been to Europe once, never mind. It was okay. Mari's heading back six-five this Sunday. And he actually has all the papers that I gave him with more information than just this one soccer goal picture. But I I I like it because uh, it comes up and then he has these little folding back things on top, these little supports. For the net just kind of goes over and then it just falls down to the ground and you uh, would use uh something like these little pegs here to get the net in the ground. And and now, I I stood Mari by saying, Mari, whatever we do, whatever kind of goal we get, we gotta make sure that we, you know, cement it in somehow, fix it to the ground, so somebody can't just come in and pick them up and put them on a flatbed truck and leave. And somebody said, you really think they do that? I don't know, Sam.
Yes, I think they will. I think someone would steal it.
So the plan is to uh, these, then the exactness that we're getting has uh, anchor. An anchor that you put in cement into the ground. And then it has some kind of a locking system that you, I guess you either, it's a, so it's a padlock or some kind of locking device. But we're thinking, I thought to Sean the other day, he says, just bring the cement up over that and just cement the whole thing in, so it's almost impossible to get out of there without coming in with a backhoe and digging the whole thing up, so.
I hate to make it more complicated, how would you handle a flood? Would it be somewhat removable in a flood event?
Just take the nets down. I mean, they might get washed away.
Oh, yeah.
Storm, that storm, you're gonna have a face of storms.
I'm just saying, I'm just saying, in a flood event, it it gets very hot down there, you'd lose it, I just, I'm just saying, as a matter of fact.
We, we.
So you you, I'm just saying, you might want to make it permanent, but some way it can be.
We may, I may then, I mean, put something in the ground with cement anchors. And then there is some kind of mechanism on this thing, which is not shown here, but it somehow, I forget the terminology they use, but it was some kind of a you know, you get it in there together, secure, and then you could supposedly unlock it. He's thinking that we need to put this in on like a Friday evening to pick it up again on Sunday.
Okay, there you go.
Uh, that's his idea.
Oh.
I. I could do that for a while, but we're gonna, what's that? What we did. I think it should be permanent, I mean, it's permanent.
Yeah, there's nothing permanent on the river bottom, I'm just saying, just give you, when a flood comes, it's gone.
Okay, there's a river, there's a land that floods, and then there was a land that takes buildings down, it's in the area.
That's all floodway.
Floodway.
That's all floodway down there.
Okay, well, no, I agree. Then I, we will work on something that we can make as permanent as possible, but then.
Removable.
Yeah, that's fine, that's fine, yes.
Are there a lot of people out there playing soccer along?
You probably will.
But let me tell you, I was, I was at the park with my dog again, let me tell you. Well, if we had a soccer goal, I think we're gonna, I think we. We have a basketball court there. Every other time I come there, there's people out playing basketball. There were these three guys that were younger twenties playing the other day on that little hoop. And they were just going all out, up and down, up and down, then they all went down to the river to cool off. And this guy came out of the river bottom with the basketball that he was handling as well uh, with his feet, then then he had with his hands, and I said, you played soccer? Well, he goes like, and then what else did you play? Well, basketball. He played, he was just a very good athlete, and I said, if we put soccer goals in out here, would you consider coming over here, playing some soccer? Yes, true. I think if you put those out there, people will use them and uh, yeah.
Quick question. Dealing with donations can be somewhat of a tricky item.
Okay.
Um, has transfer of funding or money already taken place?
No.
If if I, what I might suggest is that um, at a future city council action after Mr. Domingo returns, um, we could consider accepting a donation of the soccer bowls rather than the city purchasing them, if he if he wants them to be used for that purpose. For that, for the city council.
So he can buy the soccer goals and then present.
That that'd be my recommendation, otherwise, if he wants to make a donation to the city, it kind of flows into the general fund. We have to go go through and get the purchasing, but if there's something that that makes sense already. And this is, you know, the cause that's. Near to him, and maybe that's the the quickest way to proceed.
That would be great.
Well, if it's, if it's his right, if he's just presenting to the city, I'd like to install these soccer pools that I went out to, would like to purchase.
But but he had a cost on on those, right? You had a.
These were right at a thousand, and they went from the same goal, go up as far as two or three or four, four thousand dollars, for basically exactly the same.
A thousand for both of them.
Two thousand for both of them, a thousand for both. We we found.
You've still gotta pay money to install them, right?
Well, I thought we were gonna get Sean McDonald.
And who's gonna pay for the concrete and whatever else you might need.
I'll I'll pay for the concrete.
Or we can pay that out of the park fund possibly.
They can't be that, can't be that much, what we need is expertise. And Sean.
And depending on the construction material, I'd recommend meeting with either Lisa or Lee to discuss impacts the the flood consideration, so. But they need to be hardened, you know, if you want to put. It doesn't have to be as nice a goal post as this, if you just want to really anchor some posts deep in the ground and saying. You know, size, and then you, those that that could withstand a flood event.
No way.
Yeah, we got no way over here.
And they won't survive, I mean, you'd have to have, maybe something you could take out of the ground.
Well, at least won't float away from them. They might get bitten, knocked over, but not from them.
It's all floodway, but. I, it's, it cranks out through there.
At this point, I, we'll do is get some good anchors. There is some kind of a locking mechanism on the one that that we uh, that he has the papers on right now and he's in.
No, we don't need to design it right now, but yeah, well, we want to have that conversation.
Yeah, yeah, we'll have a conversation, you know.
That's awful generous, doesn't it?
I would, I would like to bring something up, I do think that it is very generous and I mean, I think it is amazing, but I also think that, you know, the way that we have policy and procedure and protocol that we do have Parks Advisory Board. I do understand that there was a meeting that was trying, you know, to be held and there was some interest via email. But I think Adrian also did put a whole lot of work into the parks, uh, you know, master plan and um, that hasn't been accepted just yet. Uh, so I think like, in order for us as a city to function the way that we should. We need to follow our policy, procedure and protocol. There is a parks master plan that we do need to refer back to, to look and to make sure that we are following. Everyone that had a voice and attended these meetings, that their voice is valid and their concerns are heard. And that we need to go back to that documentation, it needs to be presented to the parks board, and then it needs to be presented to us.
I'm gonna say one thing, I appreciate, appreciate you stopping us. I am absolutely wits end on this, after uh, four to six weeks, my dog has tried to die on me several times, he's been in intensive care, I just took him. I am at my wit's end on this, okay, I think this is a very reasonable presentation. I spoke to three of our council, both council. Myself, Susan Shown, Anita Gonzalez, three out of five, they said, no problem, back me fully on this. And I, I can't handle any more red tape. And if you want me to stay on as the Parks Advisory Chairman, this needs to be approved of.
If you need assistance with um, you know, as far as delegating and speaking to the parks board, I have no problem with going to the meeting or also coordinating with Adrian, I can definitely assist you with that, and I have no problem with helping you in that capacity, I'm sorry to hear about your dog.
Adrian, you're the one that told me I have to talk to these people on the phone and get an okay, which is what I went with, okay? So I'm asking for three council members to vote on this tonight and approve it, and we will do everything that you want done and make sure it happens. I just can't wait any longer, I'm not waiting for two more weeks, so. Get another meeting and then two more weeks after that, make another meeting.
I just can't, I can't.
Dr. Latimer, I think um, we'll follow our city administrator's advice and wait until Mari is back in town and he can.
That was the administrator said, he said, would you?
Yeah, so there's a couple issues. It's not, it's not for a vote. Yeah, it's not, it's. Wanted to could take action, I think, let's, let's let this marinate, I think, work with some of our local city staff who are responsible for the flood plain management.
That's fine.
And um, well, I think the council member, Bill Lewis was right on, let's make sure this is.
Okay, I was, I was kind of afraid of losing Mari's interest, I don't think he would pull out. But it has been four to six weeks since he offered to do this, and I've tried as best I could to get everybody together and.
Oh, I think we're all, we're all for.
Oh, yeah, we're all.
We're all for, we just.
I think it's wonderfully generous.
Yeah, we'll, we'll back to work, we'll get.
All right. Thank you, thank you.
You know, it's government, you know, government.
Red tape, it's all red tape. There's a lot of red tape, but I'll help you any way that I can.
Don't leave us, don't leave us.
Okay, we're gonna move on to new business and discuss the Fourth of July parade. I mean, not just parade, the whole, the whole week, week-long event. Well, it's four nights.
Yeah, that's true.
Okay, Kay, uh, Katie, yes, hi, um. I don't know if you received the PowerPoint presentation that I sent to you guys to happen in Jan, I don't know if you had it, it's on that email with the.
I think I might have a copy.
Okay.
Take my second folder.
Okay, um, on that is printed, well, first, I'm Katie Grandbar, owner of Martindale River Cafe. I'm kind of spearheading this Fourth of July weekend extravaganza event and and just kind of going through all the different parts and pieces, because there is quite a bit, because we're trying to make it a four-day festival um, of sorts, like we talked uh, last week, last week already. Uh, what we did come to is looking at the um, hotel motel tax um, and hoped to use some of that funding um, with just the art side of it, which is um, the bands and musicians. Um, I came back with a close budget of what that would go to, um, and that's what's in that packet that we all have is. Um, and just, just so you guys know, on budgeting with musicians, this is a lowball. Um, this is, this is so pulling favors. Um, this is a five-piece band that's touring is usually getting paid fifty thousand to two thousand, um, like I said last time, in Lockhart, when they do courthouse nights, those bands get paid about two to six thousand. Um, so this is again, just we're lowballing trying to get for a full weekend, um, and once the figures to get some. Um, sorry.
Have you seen the figures that were presented to us?
Uh, on the, yes, that was like a.
So um, for the audience, what we were proposing is July first to have a, a concert, you call it a concert, right?
Yes, we'll call, yeah.
Eight to ten P M, who's the band?
Well, so this is all, this is why we're trying to fast track with the funding, is because we can't go about booking these bands until we know that we have the funding to pay them this amount of money. Um, and so if we were going to go proceed without this amount, um, it would scale back that artist. Um, and that's the best way to, I can't promise anybody and book them without knowing that we can afford to up and come out. Um.
So we're looking at July first, July second, July third. And um, and then, of course, funding for the Sound P A and.
And then advertising being with local newspapers, um, prints and flyers, signs, things like that.
And then the, uh, July fourth would be the parade.
So the proposed uh, idea was uh, that July first would just be um, the street would not be closed down, it would just be kind of like the welcoming party, um, which Carlton is letting us use his grass space across the street here. Um, and that will be that first uh, music performance there. Um, the second day being a Saturday, which is what we were talking of, um, a carnival, the street closer. Um, and carnival going on during the day, and then the evening being the music, and that's where that two bands are in there. Um, for an earlier band starting um, around six P M, and then the night band um, coming on after that, uh, which would be like your headliner. Um, and this being with the street closed off on that. Okay, um, and then, sorry. Uh, and so this is the full concept, this is for the entire weekend, um, and what we use the budget is just the musicians. That is what you're seeing budget breakdown, it is not including all of the other parts and pieces that are here. Um, because we can't book and move forward and know what that is going to happen unless we have an approved budget um, to work with. Um, so yeah, so festival weekend being, starting the movie night on uh, Thursday, which is already being funded through the library and us at the cafe. Uh, and then July first is being that kickoff party, um, which is music in the evening. Uh, we were also discussing a um, historic, I'm sorry, I forgot some water. A historic Martindale, um, kind of like a gallery of sorts, um, happening where people can put pictures and show parts and pieces of Martindale and Fourth of July's past, um, that being opened starting July first. July second being the carnival and then another concerts with glow stick, glow stick party rather than doing fireworks. We were kind of going to an alternative um, glow party, and then July third doing the uh, Martindale Market and two-stepping in the streets. So having the street closed for the market as well as another concert and dancing in the street, and then July four being our parade. And then these lights keep just going, um, kind of in detail each day, there's the movie night, um, the second is being that the concert on the first, and then the opening, this is the carnival, which um that we were getting going about fucking booze and kids games and things. But like I said, this budget that we're proposing is just for the concerts, not for these parts.
What about the advertising signage?
The advertising is for, that is on there, is for the signage, but not for directional signage and parking and things like that. It's just for the advertising of the entire event and for the music acts that are coming.
What about some of that being phase two?
Being phase two of, and what we're working on is trying to relate how those can go in with the hotel. Being phase two of, and what we're working on is trying to relate how those can go in with the hotel motel tax ordinances or the ruling on that and how that money can be used. We know for a fact that the music can be applied to the hotel tax. I believe that was printed as another approval that was made in 2020, which was the, it was approved to use hotel funding for a July 4th celebration in 2020 that the council voted on at that time, but of course, we don't know that.
Well, advertising and the other stuff is included too. Advertising and signage is part of that.
This is what, right, this is the budget that I'm referring to.
I'm really excited.
But that's part one. So then there would also be part two, right, for the other stuff?
Right. And that is in if we can find ways to relate this to that tax, which working with credit cost around.
Need to do more work to find out what those costs are going to be. But under the hotel motel tax, you spend money on the promotion of your event. So that would advertise inside it. We'll just need to come up with a more accurate cost.
What I'm going to consider is for city council is if considering this as a arts program. And if it relates to overnight stage because it's a multiple days scheduled events. We do have budgeted, I believe, eight thousand dollars for art programming. My recommendation, our fiscal year's closing soon. This is the only thing that's on the horizon. If they cast us open to it, allocating that entire budget to this event for the, for that event to be put on. And from there, how it's used is in support of that arts programming.
And then we don't have to worry about motel, hotel.
Well, that would satisfy the requirements of the hotel motel tax. And then it provides them a budget.
Right.
And they don't have to go back to us and ask for more. It is for the furtherance of art, art scarcity and people staying overnight for multiple.
Right.
The predominant focus of the advertising must be the overwhelming majority must be the performing acts. So in other words, it cannot be Martinville Fourth of July Festival Parade Event. Small front of the bottom, come see Michael Platten and Mystics perform.
I like that.
It's going to have to be Michael Platten and Mystics performing. How, how would you, your typical, you know, billing, you get like often say limits, here's who's coming, right kind of stuff.
Well, basically like that first page, right?
Yeah, it's, it's, the actual art must be on.
That page there where it's talking about.
Go back to that. Focus more even more so. Even, even more on.
On the music.
Yes.
Yeah.
It, it, this has got to be music focused, music central because it is promoting the arts and everything. If we want to use the funds for this, everything is secondary to the art process. I think we just need to pull up.
The festival.
You don't want to put Fourth of July in there.
Well, we can say Fourth of July.
Fourth of July.
And this, we were doing literally the exact opposite. We were making it Fourth of July Martinville Celebration and using music as its secondary. So just rebranding it to making it an Eric's Festival and having it on the Fourth of July and incorporating all of the other.
On the Fourth of July week.
If there's any, any more discussion on this.
I, I have some, I have some discussion, but that's, that's just so I could be aware. So you said the eight thousand dollars is eight thousand dollars every year? Does that come up every year?
Yes.
So then.
So right now, we actually have a little savings account in the hotel tax funds. But we basically zero this, but we expected to receive twenty thousand dollars in hotel taxes this year or something along those lines. And we budgeted eight thousand for our program.
Out of that hotel tax.
Out of the expected hotel tax revenue received this fiscal year, I believe we're.
So we put the budget in your packet? Yes.
So, so today, we've received almost, we received seven thousand eight hundred dollars in hotel taxes through the month of March, to the end of March. And we have budgeted eight thousand for arts programs. Other budget items included advertising and signage at different amounts. So, okay, at this point, not only have we budgeted, but we're also at that funding that we needed. So we're just, we need to dip into.
Hotel tax.
Hotel taxes have been collected in prior. If wanted to use that for something else, you know, additional, that's just what we budgeted for what we expected to bring in. We're on, we're on path with that. And then this is a, so given that there's really nothing else on the provision. It would be a fashion put all to this.
On the, whenever you sent out the ordinance, it was signed in the ordinance, it was approved that we would do a fireworks extravaganza.
This is the resolution.
Right there. Yes, the resolution.
There seems to be some insurance issues with the fireworks stuff.
Or a way to burn man.
With the glow sticks.
I think you got to stay away from that. So the hotel taxes are not funding fireworks. If we did any fireworks extravaganzas or anything like that, that is, that is coming out of our general fund.
I got it.
And just something to fund extra.
I also emailed the T M L and they were saying, oh, I can see the weekend going, but Fourth of July.
No fireworks.
No, why not?
Probably a burn man.
I'm using the hotel.
I was saying just because it was written on the resolution.
There, there's, there's only one, I mean, granted, it's, it's, it's T M L's interpretation that it, it wouldn't promote one of the, one of the twelve enumerated things in three, five, one, one, zero, one of the tax codes. And additionally to that, put heads in beds. That's a matter of T M L's interpretation. There is no case, there is no case law that addresses it, but I guess it's.
It didn't make sense to me because I would think that the main event that would bring people here is that big parade that it.
Yeah, and I think the idea is. Right, but I mean, I, I think the idea is you've got these, you've got these twelve enumerated things that are allowable and it. I'm sorry.
And then one, let me just ask one other question. So the Saint Mary's, the, well, Immaculate Heart, I'm sorry. Immaculate Heart has their homica that always does put a focus on the music. It is a three day event. Would churches in the area, if they're doing events like that, would they be eligible to use some of the hotel motel tax?
Yeah. Yeah, we, we could have discriminated versus from a secular event versus religious or anything like that. So if there's, if there's a performing arts event that, that is, and it makes it easier to just find ones multiple days, like you mentioned, Micah is or this. You could use those funds for, for either one or the other or both. Yeah, that would be.
What we may want to do in the future is say by March, the end of March, any group that wants to apply for this would have to have their application in and the event that they would want funded. And then the city can decide how they're going to divvy up those funds. That's what Sam Marcus does.
We also have, we're, you know, in our budget, we budget to spend funding on advertisement and other things. If, if city council desired to, instead of spending money on additional advertising for the hotel industry, as I said, fund additional art program. That's just a change in how we spend under the budget. So it's something that we could continue to consider if. I don't, I don't think it needs to be exclusive. There's, there's a lot.
Okay, yeah, just so that way, I mean, like other entities in town know that are also, you know, like with the church, with the bands that they're bringing in and everything that they're doing for the community as well. But I think there's, you know, they don't know about it or other groups don't know about it. So I want to make sure that if we're going to be doing this, that we let the community know that those funds are there available for any church to use, any other organization to use. Cinco de Mayo, Juneteenth, like whatever other kind of events that, that's going to be going on. If it's going to be multiple days, then they need to have access to funds as well.
Yeah, sure. I don't think we've had anybody reach out to us on.
I just don't think people know about it.
Yes, sir.
So if I, if you don't mind, the issue you'll learn into that is that you have to be able to prove that it puts heads in bed. So with the occupancy tax, you have to be able to demonstrate that the funds that you're using are bringing people from out of town into your community. And if you can't justify it, then you can't quantify that, yes, we're bringing people in, then you can be audited.
Yeah.
How, yeah, how would.
But that's the reason Sam Marcus didn't use occupancy tax. So like size and sounds, don't use hotel occupancy tax.
Like Lockhart, they would use the Chamber of Commerce to vet programming and they, I don't know if they still do that. I think they might have stopped that about a year ago, but there's, cities grapple with this issue all the time. As a matter of, are we, are we following the spirit and the tent of the law?
Right, I think we are.
If you are, you can easily count. You can go and make an estimate of people.
There's five hundred people here. You could probably assume that.
And what we need to do is get the list of people that are paying and put them like on, that are paying the taxes and showing, hey, these are the places you can stay. Here in Martinville.
I don't think the control is obviously on it Martinville for eight thousand dollars.
Well, yeah. I don't want the.
It would be nice to know where to utilizing this can be too. Because I didn't know that this was even a thing prior when we opened in 2020 until that what used the resolution was approached and they said, hey, we have this hotel tax. Do you think you can help us book bands? And that's the first time I had heard it. So when we just, when we first opened, it's the first time I knew that this was, and I never did before. So I think it would be nice as a community member to know that if you're planning something, that there is funds that can be used for it.
Cause I mean, it was good. Last time the city was able to help y'all out with five thousand, was it five?
No.
No, how much was it?
No, we, there was no, I was going to say, there was no cash exchange. It was, I had asked to close the street. So the city covered all of the expenses.
I thought there was, I thought you were funded for bands.
No, we paid that out of pocket.
Yeah.
And it cost us twelve thousand dollars.
Oh, ouch.
I was asked to address that.
What?
The budget's probably going to be more than eight. So eight thousand from what you're, you're lining up. Plus we can ask for money for advertising and stuff for regular budget.
My, my recommendation to council was to, to dedicate the budget of our programming to, to the organizers of the event.
Let's do one step.
We still have three thousand for signing.
One step at a time.
Yeah.
And it's still one step. We're going way.
And then are we going to do this every year for Fourth of July?
I agree with you.
Let's take it one year at a time.
All right.
So let's move on to three two. Approve the use of the art program fund for the purpose of the Fourth of July Performing Arts Weekend Event. So if we want to do this, I do need a motion.
I make a motion to approve the eight thousand dollars that's in the art program fund for the purpose of the bands performing arts weekend event.
A second then.
Mike, second. So we have a motion and a second. Is there any more discussion? Okay, hearing none. Mike made the motion. Jan, how do you vote?
Aye.
And you second it or you made the motion?
I made the second, yeah.
Aye.
Okay, the motion carries.
Hey, we got claps, like, like clap bars. That's unusual.
Okay, we just have one more item on our, our agenda. It's to review volunteer interest application for the River Advisory. And Matthew McGovern has put in his application to be on that board. He's not able to be here to.
No, he's not.
He was participating online.
And, and so has he already been approved through the River Commission?
Yes, they have made the recommendation. So.
That's a requirement to be appointed.
Yeah, but we, we passed people through without the part, or the committee's not knowing about it. And I think they should be bringing their recommendations to us.
So they did.
And they, so they did.
They did on this one. That was a good question.
All right, I make a, I make a motion to appoint Matthew McGovern to the Martinville River Action Committee.
I'll second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any more discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, and the motion carries.